It is 6 o'clock. We're having this workshop in the Louisville City Council for Monday, April 17th. We call it to order and we do have a quorum. First item up, we're going to move through our regular agenda items and consent agenda items. So council, if you could find your agenda. Item one is a public hearing for 131 Milton Street. Any questions? Item two, public hearing. This is Storage Court in South Stemmons. And yes, Storage Court is an actual road in Louisville. And there is a street sign that indicates such because I had to drive by it the other day just to prove that it exists.
Exactly.
You can't Google it because it keeps looking for storage facilities.
Exactly.
So we need to talk about a name change for that, by the way.
That went off. It was the time we were really creative.
Yeah, it's a little cul-de-sac right there. It's a corner of the auto glass place down there. It used to be the billiard shop on 35 going south. All right, I think we're done with item two. Item three, consideration of amendment to the CDBG 2021 Annual Action Plan. Any questions on this one? Item four, minutes. Item five, one tree planted grant. Item six, economic development, except for EK. Item seven, transportation consultation services. And they've continued to do great work for us. Just an editorial comment there. Item eight, caf associates.
Do you hear that? Great. Nice recuse.
This does create a little bit longer bit of trail, but it's a little bit more scenic, I think, based on what the city manager and I talked about a little bit. So it makes it makes it a little nicer amenity. Mine is a facility use agreement with Span. Firing up the congregant meals again. Excited to see that.
That kitchen's big enough. I guess I've not seen that kitchen.
Yeah, and it's got Sonic Ice.
Oh.
Saying.
Do you know the real term for that Sonic Ice?
No.
Neblets.
Oh, well, there you go. Learned something that I didn't really need to know.
It's called neblons.
Item 10, construction manager at RISK.
So on that one, what was their original total all in?
We're actually going to do a presentation on it. But it is about $1 million less than what we had brought to you before.
Isn't that wonderful?
That's why we do what we do. We have an AFA agreement with Texas DOT for item 11. And this.
Do they have their keys or stuff in it?
Bicycle and pedestrian shared use paths. So this is linking up the last bits of our ECTA trails. Items eight and 11.
It's going to be a short meeting.
Well.
No.
Item G is reports. And we do have closed session tonight. So no other comments. We will go ahead and move on to workshop session. Item B, presentation of Chin history, culture, and community issues. And we have Mr. Sang here. He present.
We can advance it if you need to, or you can touch the screen. You can slide it to the left.
Swipe left. There you go.
Well, thank you, everyone. I've seen some of you already. My name is Yau Sang. I am the board president of Chin American Association. Basically, our organization represents the Chin community throughout North Texas. And I'm so excited to be here because I get to talk about the Chin people here, your citizens, the people that you represent. And so it's a lot better than asking councilman, which I used to do, or to approve settlement. So what I'll be talking about today, I'm sure some of you have seen, or if not all of you have seen the PowerPoint presentations already, so I'm going to go through really quickly. If you have any questions, please stop me. And I think we can do it under 15, 20 minutes. So I'll talk about our history a little bit. I'll talk about our community here and then the current issues in Burma or here and maybe call it to action at the end. All right, so I think it's important to talk about where we came from. Since last time I looked, the Chin population is represented about 5% of Louisville population. I'm not sure if that is still accurate, but we are one of the eight major ethnic groups in Burma. And we are one of the founding members of the Union of Burma. Just historical tidbits, Burma was ruled by Great Britain. And at the end of 1947, they basically gave the Burmese a chance to gain independence. And the other ethnic groups, they were conquered by the Burmens already. But the Chins, the Shans, and the Kachins in the north, we have not been conquered by the majority Burma ethnic group. And so our forefathers decided to form a union with the other ethnic groups. And so that's how the Union of Burma came into being. We are further subdivided into six major ethnic groups. Most of us are Christians due to missionaries from America and Baptist churches, USA. Where we came from, especially the people that you serve in Louisville, we came mainly from Chin State, which is in western Burma, and Sagai Division, which is close to Chin State, east of Chin State. And the majority of the Chin in the Louisville area are of the Lian ethnic group, which is part of that group. And we're from the central region. I say approximately, people that came to America and people that live in Louisville, probably 80% of the Chins are of the Lian ethnic group. All right, so that's just a map. The map Burma, this is where Chin State is, this is where all of us, most of us came from. And then this is Sagai Division. And there's a lot more Chin people outside of Chin State. And so there's a lot of people in Sagai Division here, in Rango, other parts of the country, and then in India and also in Bangladesh. This is the Chin speaking people, just a map of the Chin language speaker in Burma. So we extend all the way over here. So why did we leave our native country? Burma has been in internal conflicts, civil wars since the military took over, which was in 1962. A lot of the Chins, we practice a different faith. Burma is a majority Buddhist country. And so they, I'm sure you've heard this before, or learned about this, or read about this already, the major ethnic groups, they try to basically make other minorities within that country like themselves, speak the same language as the majority language, practice the same faith. And so a lot of us, you know, we were persecuted because of our faith, because we don't belong to the majority ethnic Burman community. There were lots of refugees in India, Thailand, Malaysia. And a lot of us, I would say 99% of the population, we came to legally to UNHCR. Some of us came here and got asylum here. So that's how we came. Why Louisville? That's a very good question. The guy you see there, his name is Dr. Chimoy. He was actually the first Chin person to buy a house in Louisville, think back in 2002. And I think he may be the first Chin to move here. So if you have a different opinion about why we're here and you're not happy, you can blame him. If you're happy that we're here, then he's one of the main reasons why we're here. You know, I'm sure you all know this already, why people move here. Louisville is a great city to live and to work. Same reason why many people are moving here now, that's why we move here as well. A lot of us are, I think council members may have noticed already, are concentrated in 75067, that zip code. All right, so our community, as I said earlier, we're spread all over the metroplex. Louisville is where most of us live. There's a huge population Garland. There used to be a lot more in Dallas, mainly people that are, that came here more recent. And once they get established, you know, they buy houses and so they tended to move further up north. Home relationship is important, so is education. And so that's that. We, the Chin American Association, we represent basically all, most of the churches. Each church would send a representative and that church, like me, is a board member. And then within that representative, we elect officers. And I'm currently the board president. I probably estimate, you know, some of the churches, the larger churches are here in Louisville. There used to be a lot more because of economic opportunities and other reasons. The population is dynamic. Some of them move out for business reasons, some have moved in here. But I think there's been a slight decline in population throughout the metroplex. The main reason why people move out is to start their own businesses. So a lot of them start sushi restaurants. Recently, there's a trend in getting into farms. And so they move out to Missouri, Arkansas, Texas, Oklahoma. So now that our community is getting more established, what has happened the past couple of years is, you know, when we first came here, we didn't have a place to worship. And so we went, you know, ran churches from other places. As we get more established, we bought our own churches. And now we're at a place where the church that we bought 10, 15 years ago is no longer fit the purpose for the current membership. And so a lot of the churches are renovating, buying new churches, or constructing additional facilities. And in Louisville, there's actually two, three churches that are either adding a gym or they bought land and are building a new facility. I did this with my wife for our church. We are located in Dallas, but our members are located throughout the metroplex. We're probably the most diverse in terms of geographic. And so this is just, in order for our church leaders to make a decision, we decided to craft where our church members were in the past 10 years and where we are now. This is not scientific by any means. We basically took church members by household. And so you can see the trend. Louisville is relatively stable. Dallas, there's been a big drop. You can see also Garland. The Garland population, now that people are getting more established, they move up to Sashi? Is that how you say it?
Sashi.
Sashi, Sashi and upper north area, buying new houses. And also, a lot of them have moved for business opportunities. And as far as immigration goes, or population goes, it's more natural now. There's not a lot of immigrations coming from outside the country. I think I talked about that, our organization, what we do, prior projects, some of the things that we've done in the past. And one of the things from the board president, what I want to do is reach out to the cities where we live. And if time permits, I plan to also speak at the Garland City Council, just so that they know we're there. Current issues, you know, there's been in the news a lot about Ukraine and the wars and the sufferings. While that is tragic, most of the people that you serve, the Chin people, what we care about is what's happening in Burma. This is a major town in Chin State. This is called Tanlang. In 2021, there was an election and the civilian, basically government was supposed to come into power, but the military claimed there was a rigged election. And so they used that as a justification to take power back. And there's been an uprising against that military coup. And fortunately, because of that, the military has been bombing entire towns, civilians. There's been lots of deaths. People have fled to India. There's a lot of internal IDP camps within Burma and Chin State. And so that's what's happening right now. This is what we care about, the people in Louisville. And this is still ongoing. So what can you do as the city council member, people with, you know, the authority and power to affect the people that live in Louisville? And we want you to continue to support our community here in Louisville. I'm very appreciative of city council members that have showed up in the Chin National Day Celebration and Louisville SD, Chin's festival. Louisville SD has been, they've been way ahead, I guess, in terms of engaging our community because they've been doing this for a lot longer for the kids, the students that go there. So they're doing great. You know, engage us and involve us in initiatives that impact the community. If there are economic developments, things that will also affect us, please let us know. I know that sometimes as a leader within my community, you know, I would send out a text message or a Viber message to our group member. And the people that speak the same language, they would respond. I don't have to do any extra work. But people within the minority, I have to do extra work. Basically, I have to reach out specifically individually, you know, to text or call them and say, you know, hey, we have a meeting or can you do something? So it takes an extra effort to get the minority, you know, to involve people within that community. So you can do the same for our community. We want to be integrated into the Louisville community. You know, little things like maybe translation documents available for city services. I know other major cities have done this. I'm not sure if Louisville's doing this. If not, maybe that's something you can do. And, you know, work with us to address community issues. There's a lot of, you know, things that affect other Americans, like mental health and depression that affects our community as well. So if you work with us, then you're also working, sorry, I have allergy. So what I'm trying to say is, you know, if you, the people that you serve, city, the Chin population in Louisville, we're here, we're your neighbors, we're going to be here for a while, hopefully. And so I think it's important that we work together, that you know us, that we live here. And that's going to conclude my presentation. Thank you for giving me time today to present to you all. If you have any questions, I can answer that if not. Thanks.
All right, workshop. Item C, discussion of Texas Solar Switch program. Mindy White and someone from Solar United Neighbors.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to say a brief word. This is Hannah Mitchell with Solar United Neighbors. She came all the way up from Austin to speak with us today, so I'm very grateful for her time. I'll turn it over to her in just a moment, but I did want to give you a little bit of local perspective before we do. Solar is something that there's definitely been a positive trend for and a hunger for in our community. I looked up the numbers that our building inspection staff have been tracking in terms of permits that we've seen with residential solar. Starting in 2019, we had 20 permits. We've had more than 20 permits pulled already this year. Every year since 2019, that number has doubled with over 400 permits pulled residentially last year. So there's definitely an interest in our community for solar at residences. So with that, I'll turn it over to Hannah, and she's got some interesting programs to talk to you about tonight.
Thank you. So I just have to go left.
You swipe left.
Swipe left. All right. So these are, this is what I'll be talking about tonight. And I'm Hannah Mitchell, representing Solar United Neighbors. I'll leave some, should we leave time for questions? Yeah, I'll leave time for questions. So I'm going to pause halfway through. And if you have questions, feel free to ask, and then I'll continue with the rest of it. So a little bit about Solar United Neighbors. Sun is a national 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to consumer protection, solar consumer protection and advocacy. We help get more solar panels on top of roofs. And we also advocate for policies that make it easier for more people to access solar. We are unaffiliated with any particular installer or product or financing solution. And we're dedicated to helping people learn more about rooftop solar and whether or not it's right for them or in their family or their small business. So we're going to be talking about solar group purchasing programs this evening. We've been working in Texas since 2018. And as of about a year ago, we started working with I-choozer, they're international experts in solar group buying. And they have been doing solar group buying programs since 2012.
Swipe left.
All right. And we, as I, we've run about 15 different group buy programs in Texas since 2018. We focus primarily on the retail choice electricity market. So as well as areas that have rural electric cooperatives. But most of our work is in the retail choice area, meaning the greater on-core or center point parts of the state. Those are the transmission and distribution utilities. The reason that we have historically focused on those areas is because it is difficult for people to figure out how solar interacts with their utility bill. And there's per capita, per capita less solar adoption than say in Austin and San Antonio. So we have experience in this part of the state. And we are working with I-choozer to scale up our impact. So we reached a point where we can't take on more co-ops or we can't allow more people to join a certain co-op. And so working with I-choozer allows us to reach larger scales. And so together, we're dedicated to scaling up the adoption of rooftop solar in Texas. So some benefits of Texas Solar Switch and solar group buying programs in general. We're aiming to bring down the cost and the hassle on a quality solar installation. And in terms of benefits for municipalities, we take away a lot of the program management that would be required to run a program like this for residents. We handle the installer recruitment and management process. So this, again, takes away the need for the city to manage an RFP process. And this is handled by I-choozer, the installer recruitment and management process. There's a pretty rigorous set of prequalification measures, where there's financial analysis that's run. We make sure that there's appropriate liability and consistent record, sorry, liability insurance and a consistent record of customer satisfaction. And I-choozer manages a reverse bidding process so that with all quality measures remaining the same, the companies with the lowest price offering win the group. And then after, after this reverse auction, there are regular check-ins to work through any communication issues with customers and just ensure a smooth customer journey for everyone involved and a smooth process for the installers. From start to finish, so from the beginning of the awareness, the launch and the awareness phase of Texas Solar Switch through to when installations are complete, it's about a five-month process. This includes about four months of awareness, public awareness building, and a six-week period where people can decide whether or not they would like to move forward with an installation. And then an installation window of five months. That's not to say someone who signs a contract is going to need to wait five months to get their solar installed, but that the program overall should take about eight months from start to finish. And in terms of a customer journey, someone will sign up on a dedicated landing page. There is a, there is a reverse auction that determines the installers for the group. And then people receive a personal offer after this reverse auction that will take into account approximately their electricity needs and give them an offer that is at the group. And this is an initial estimate that can be refined upon a site survey. At that point, people can say, you know what, like I've learned more about it, I attended an information session, now I know more about solar, no thank you. Or they can say, hey, this looks really great. I'm going to reserve my spot with a fully refundable $150 deposit and say, you know, I'm going to accept this initial offer. Should they, should anything come up after that initial $150 deposit is paid that, hey, there's too much shading, change my mind. They can get that back. But that helps, that helps people think through whether or not they really want to commit to furthering this process. And it also ensures more committed and serious customers for the installing. And then installations happen and we enjoy seeing a lot more solar in the community. So I'm just going to speak from the Houston program that was launched like late fall, early winter. About 1,600 residents signed up. And as of last week, we had about 70 signed contracts. The signed contract deadline is in May, so we're hoping to have about 30-ish more is what we're expecting to roll through. So around 100 signed contracts total. Of these 70, that's around, that's around 635 kilowatts of new added local solar capacity. And just to give you a snapshot of what this means, so for every 50 homes that end up going solar, you have pretty significant emissions reductions and bill savings locally that can be reinvested in the community. And I think this is the final slide before I get into campaign collateral. So I'll see if there are any questions at this point. But some, so just to get a snapshot of what it looks like for a city to be involved, the Texas Solar Switch team manages the campaign progression, the communications plan, the seller communications, the customer communications. And it's up to the city to approve and sign off on the communications plan. We love it when cities can help promote through, say, newsletters to their residents, let them know about the program. And the Texas Solar Switch team then reports on progress throughout the program. So I will be getting into different examples of campaign collateral and what that sort of awareness and personal offer and information sessions look like. But I'll just pause and see if there are questions about anything I've said so far.
What kind of discount does this type of program usually result in for?
About 20% is usually what we, what we aim for.
I'm assuming this is going to be similar to the waterline insurance program where we basically are just adding our logo to their collateral.
Yes, although you'll see their collateral on this, they do a really good job. It's not just a letter that, I know a lot of us get calls going, is this real? When you just get a letter in the mail with the, this looks, I think their collateral does this better than what that is. does this better than what that is. But yes, it is.
Other questions?
Counsel? All right.
We're currently working with about six different cities between some, in some cities, iChoose is the main point of contact, in some cities, SUN's the main point of contact. But for Texas Solar Switch overall, we're working with Farmers Branch, Corinth, City of Houston, Fate, and I don't recall the rest. There's, there's six of them.
That reminds me of another question. Is this just a typical financing or does this end up having some sort of, because I've seen some really esoteric, wacky, debt-laden types of funding projects for, for solar. How, how are these financed or funded?
So when a resident gets a personal offer, they have the option to, you can bring your own financing, you can go with an installer-based financing, you can pay cash. SUN provides information about a variety, so Solar United Neighbors is financing neutral. So we like to provide a lot of transparency about different financing options. We encourage people to check with their local bank or credit union. But an installer is going to have a financing product and those are through like national solar financials.
But, but as part of your program, you are showing people that they, they don't have to use the installer's financing. They have options. Okay.
What's the traditional payback for this?
So again, it depends on how you finance it. But it's, it's approximately 10 to 15 years. It depends on, in the retail choice market. So in on-core service territory where you pick and choose your retail electricity provider and those plans are constantly changing, that adds an element of, that adds an element of volatility for people who are considering solar. We have a lot of information about buyback plans and we work, SUN works with Texas Power Guide to analyze. Anyone who's interested in this can request a custom report and we'll look at your historical electricity consumption information and compare it to all of the plans in the market, taking into account your solar production to help you find the best plan to maximize your support.
I have a question. So is this a, is this a one-time program that we would do?
We, so Texas Solar Switch aims to do two programs per year. So essentially it would be an ongoing thing that people, every, you know, six months, people would hear about it as an option. And that's how, you know, a lot of people who hear about it the first time, they don't actually end up going solar. They learn a little bit more, but you know, they're not interested, it doesn't make sense for them. But it really helps with public education and awareness and the more, the more programs that you have on a, on a regular basis, then also it gives installers a consistent pipeline of work. So to answer your question, it's not a one-time thing. Each program is time limited, but there will be multiple options for people to join.
What is the general cost usually to the cities for this?
To the city? Not yet. Yeah.
So I guess part of my question was about, you know, I, we all, I think we're going to have a presentation in a minute that's going to talk about costs and the escalation. And then there's, there's interest rates that are going up. I was just curious, is, you know, is this a great time to be doing this as far as what, is the solar market following the same trends as the rest of construction where the cost is really high right now? What are you seeing with the cost of it? And I'm just trying to gauge like, how much success are we going to have doing this where the, where we're, I kind of feel like we're at a place where the market is already way up here.
Yeah. So the cost of solar has come down dramatically in the past 10 years and that's due to technology improvements. It came down a lot, I want to say in like 2021. And then it kind of stayed flat. So it, it hasn't really skyrocketed in terms of like, it's, it's not like, like how construction costs have gone through the roof. The cost of borrowing money, as you know, is very expensive. But the cost of solar has consistently gotten down.
Flat is good.
Yeah.
So that's very encouraging to hear. Are there financing options that, I guess, could there be, are there competitive financing options that y'all could help people bring to the table?
So as I mentioned, we offer information about credit unions. There are a variety of like green banks that offer specific solar financing options. I can't tell you off the top of my head what each of those are looking at, looking like right now, but.
What about the options?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there are ways that the program could help people kind of figure out a way to pay for this. Because obviously, you know, what I'm afraid of is that people are going to say, well, I really love the program, but I don't, I can't afford to do it right now. I'm just curious if there was a portion of the program where we could kind of help people figure out how they can afford to go ahead and do this now.
Are there grants out there that y'all could lend the resources, resource information to?
I mean, there, we're constantly looking for grants, say, to help with low to moderate income solar installation. They're not the easiest to come by.
Especially in Texas.
Especially in Texas. We are constantly, you know, seeking them out. And if the city, say, suddenly had money to put into a loan loss reserve fund, you know, that would be fantastic, but.
How long does the current technology last though? Is it like computers where every year and a half it's obsolete?
Oh, you know, solar panels are, so solar panels are warranted to produce electricity for 25 years. There are panels that have been, there are systems that have been around for, you know, 30, 35, 40 years that are still producing electricity. But no, these are, these are systems that are designed to produce electricity for a long period of time.
So I see the word hail resistant. So what, this is Texas, so what level, what level of hail is hail resistant?
Yeah. Yeah. So typically a solar module is designed to withstand an inch of hail falling at 55 miles per hour. So more hail resistant than say the windshield of your car, but not entirely, you know, weatherproof. That being said, there are solar that's installed in areas all over Texas where there's hail and hurricane corridors like Florida and the eastern part of Texas.
So if you have, if you have a roof that needs to be done, it can happen in Texas if you have to have it replaced every five years. How, how expensive is it to take those things down and put them back? Do roofers take them down and put them back up or is that a specialized contractor?
It's usually handled by a solar company. So we always tell folks, you know, let your homeowners and parents know that you've got a solar panel so you can wrap it into your policy. And again, what we have, what I've heard so far, and maybe insurance companies will start changing this in the future, but if you have hail damage on, if you have hail damage on your roof and some of your solar panels are damaged from the hail, what I heard from a group buy program, for example, that happened in Plano and then a massive hail storm came in, is that homeowners insurance pays for that uninsulation and reinstallation of the panels.
So let's, in the interest of time, we kind of need to focus in on what our agreement, what we're, what we're deciding on today. The conversation is, you know, is counsel want to, we're not making a decision. We're just going to say, hey, we'd be interested in moving forward or not with a program that, that markets this to residents. So just kind of keep it reined in a little bit.
Thank you. So these are examples of awareness building collateral for online and social media. So we do a combination of organic and paid online awareness building. And we offer public information sessions. We, we do this in conjunction. Texas Solar Switch does this. So a portion of it is usually run by SUN, a portion of it is run by iChooseR. But Solar United Neighbors' aim is always, you know, we care more about people learning more about solar than whether or not they end up signing a contract. And then here's an example of direct mail that goes out to residents. Will have a QR code that will direct people to a website. And ideally, we would use the, the city's logo to help build the confidence and endorsement that this is something people should pay attention to and not just their own trash. And this is an example of what a landing page looks like. And this is an example of what a personal offer looks like. So it will say the size of the system in kilowatts, approximately how many panels that is. And then a couple of different financing options, the equipment that's being used and the company that will be doing the installation. That's it.
So Mary, counsel, you know, we, we did our due diligence and contacted cities that have partnered with Solar United, I want to say United Nations, no, Neighbors. And we've gotten glowing remarks from all of them. And so we wouldn't bring it to you if we didn't think this is a legitimate company that could do some good for our citizens. But wanted to, before we moved any further, make sure this is something counsel's interested because obviously the city of Louisville's logo would be on this, this collateral. No, no dollars out of our pocket, but it is our, our reputation with our logo on.
I'm interested.
I think you have direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Adam D., update on the Tillamook Ben Public Safety Building. We have Mr. Chris Suadra available.
Hi. Good to see you again. Hopefully I get the swipe left. I'm going to have my colleague Stephen help take you through some images you've seen before, just to orient you on what this bid package is. It's bid package number five. It's GMP Amendment Number Five. It's the last piece of the puzzle. So we're excited to be here tonight, requesting your approval in the next room to move forward with our last piece, Stephen.
Sure.
And let's see if you get the left swipe thing.
And swipe anywhere on this stuff.
You can swipe anywhere?
Yep.
I don't use any of those swipe apps, so I don't know.
As Chris said, this is GMP Number Five for the main portion of the building. This is the police station and fire demonstration which faces the main corner and Dale and Valley Parkway back to the fire station side. So this is a rendering, similar perspective that you've seen before, kind of overlooking from that corner, higher perspective than you would have from the actual street corner. And more of a perspective from the courtyard area from the building looking towards the main entry.
Before you swipe, I did want you to notice the soffit here is that option that we've discussed and it's incorporated into the base. We'll see more about that later.
And again, the wood soffit continues back to the fire station, you know, ties it together nicely. And this is kind of through the fire station and this is the entry to the station itself and looking back the bays or back towards Main Street. And another view, this is kind of in between Dale and Valley Parkway, looking at the bays on the front side. And slightly refined, looking up the, from the little bit of parking that we have with the fire station for those visitors. It's a nice entryway, there's a little bit of fall in the topography there that we had the opportunity to do something nice with. And this is a screen wall to the firefighter's backyard essentially. You can see in the background, the parking garage, that was part of the previous bid pack four. And then a view from the courtyard. This is police and fire administration shared courtyard where they can hang out on the private side of the facility.
Okay. So the marketplace has tested all of our predictions and we've shed most of the cost risk to subcontractors now through burn. So we've bid out every, every package. We're rebidding seven packages just to make sure we get better, best value. But we stayed within the predictions we made last year, but we used all of our pre-construction and escalation reserves to do that. As you remember, the temporary facilities bid under budget. Those facilities are all complete now. We moved, police department was fully moved two days ahead of schedule. The fire folks, as you know, moved in January. I did want to give some recognition to the city staff that made that move, the smoothest that I've worked on in, in 40 years. Chief Waro was amazing in keeping everybody oriented and organized on the, on the property and evidence crime scene, very difficult move. Chris Presley did an amazing job of keeping all of the pieces. He was responsible for, David McAllister on the IT side performed miracles. And I would be remiss in not pointing out BRW's project manager, project architect on the, on the temporary facilities, Kevin Prabell, who was out there on Saturdays with 409. And to see an architect using paper towels in 409 out on the site on Saturday was amazing. So I just want to give a shout out to, this was a key piece and we got out of the contractor's way. They're going to start demolition this week and we were out of there a week and a half ahead of them. So shout out to all, all that team, just amazing to watch. This you approved in January and you know that we're drilling some holes. And that's bid under budget, it's fully committed. And then this bid within the owner's budget, but it bid high enough over the contractor's estimate that we were using pre-construction contingency and escalation reserves to stay within our budget. This number includes the wood soffit alternate, the second emergency generator and, and the fueling island alternatives have been accepted and are inside the GMP now. So those were considered to be especially, these two were considered to be operationally I'll take a breath here. Is there any, are there any questions on this slide? Hearing none. So we have some more alternatives that are inside the GMP. The contingency that we're carrying right now, that's on the owner's side of the table is four and a half million-ish. The overall contract after the GMP is accepted will be 103 million. So we're around 4.3, 4.4% of contingency, which is a little, it's what I would call moderately aggressive for our path forward. But the uses of contingency, there's three great examples that just came off our bid package four, which as you may remember is the parking structure and the support building and the site demolition. We pulled the We pulled the fuel tank. We had two environmental firms, independent of each other, testing that soil and making sure that we don't own any downstream risk for the next however many decades. Both firms said based on the smell of the soil, they were concerned, just based on intuition, that we had a problem. Both firms took those soil samples back to their lab, and yeah, we're talking half a million, could have been as much as a million dollars in remediation. And the test results came back, and they were very favorable, and we dodged that bullet. When we were drilling the piers, we drilled about half the piers for the parking structure, we hit the same rock that we hit at Thrive. That cost us 1.4 million dollars back when it was 1.4, it'd be more today. But we punched, we were able to, it was just a small intrusion, these were fairly shallow piers, and the driller actually got more piers drilled that day that he hit the rock than he had anticipated he would. So again, we dodged another million dollar bogey, right? And those are the kinds of things that literally can, that's what the use of the contingency is for. So as we come up out of the ground, we will have a slab board in October for both buildings. So we will have avoided all of our subsurface risk. At that point, we will be able to make a decision with you, fully involved, in releasing some of those reserves to buy the ramp on the parking structure or other alternatives that we have priced, and they are in various subcontracts and the general contract. But until then, it's our recommendation that we keep our powder dry and get past these risks. And as I may have mentioned in this room before, the next big milestone for those risk reserves is when the building is watertight.
So when Chris is talking about use of those contingencies, as we shed those risks, suddenly we unlock that contingency to be able to use for alternates. So can we progress it to the next slide? I can't access it.
All right.
So I wanted to make sure that you guys go ahead and see our priorities of alternates that we have. So first is 250,000 for lightning protection for our admin and central fire, mainly if you're going to build a building, you want it to function if it gets hit by lightning, right? So we have that as our first priority. Second is going to be ballistic metal panels at the jail connector. Keep going. Third is a monument sign at the annex building. So this is not the main sign, it's over on the other side, which will basically identify the annex portion of the building.
Not Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, not Chick-fil-A. Keep going. Four is going to be premium ceiling finishes at the lobby and break room. You will see later that one of the other alternates was premium ceilings throughout the entire building. We decided that that cost is not a high priority to have these ceilings throughout all of the areas. I mean, we're sitting here in a beautiful building with normal ceiling tiles as well. Another priority five is going to be our graphics and signage package. That's going to be throughout the interior of the building. And then we have, these were the other alternative alternates, which basically we're going to be putting on hold until the end of the project, and we can decide whether or not we want to move forward with them. One of them is obviously the alternate ceiling finishes. I don't think that's one we're going to be moving forward with. Parking canopies, a fairly high cost on the third floor of the, or the top floor of the parking structure. Solar panels on the top. I think our staff is currently looking at grant opportunities to be able to do that. So things that we can add after it's been completed. That secondary electrical feed, we ended up not needing that because we got the generator into the base bid. Courts covered parking was not a high priority and did have an extra cost with it. And then facade screenings on the parking garage. So this is the one, go to the next slide. This is about a $2 million cost for all sides to be covered, and so we basically are suggesting, one, our first question was, is this a safety? Is this cover something that's creating safety for our officers? And the answer was no, it does not have an additional safety component to it. So really, you're looking at it just from an aesthetic standpoint. So we can always add this on, it has been bid out as if it were an add-on to the building. So in future years, we can do that. But to be able to be fiscally conservative on this project, we decided not to move forward with that. And so here we are in the process, we're coming up on five more minutes, but right now, we're having you guys consider today at the council, the final GMP amendment, and then we move towards completion of construction.
Any questions or concerns, Council?
Any of the piers come up wet?
Say that again.
Any piers need to be cased?
Yes, we ran into some water and sloughing on about 25% of the piers. Fingers crossed, we're going to keep at that.
The other one thing to note is that at the end, if we have additional dollars left over, it can be used for a public art project on this.
Yes.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you for the update, great job. All right, I think we are done with workshop, we're going to go ahead and move into regular session in about five minutes.
Shows up on my mic, there we go. Good morning, good evening, we're going to call this meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. It is Monday, April 17th, 7:01 PM, and we do have a quorum. First up tonight, we have Mayor Protam Jones with our invocation.
Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation and prayer.
Thank you.
Councilmember Troyer, if you'd lead us in the pledges.
Please join me in the pledges to the US and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
I have the privilege of a couple of proclamations this evening, and I think the first up is for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Do we have anyone here to receive this tonight? Oh, great. Come on up. I don't want to be here alone, it gets scary out here. How are you? So, and if you don't mind after I'm done, you have a couple of words you'd like to? Awesome, awesome, sorry. So whereas almost 68,000 cases of child abuse and neglect were confirmed in Texas during 2022, and whereas one in 10 children will experience sexual abuse before their 18th birthday, 98% of child victims will know their alleged perpetrator, and only 10% of new arrests for sex crimes against children involve individuals with prior sex offense records. And whereas 354 children living in the city of Louisville received 3,851 services from the Children's Advocacy Center for North Texas in 2022. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote and support programs that benefit children and their families. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among a variety of entities, including but not limited to schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, child protective services, prosecution agencies, medical professionals, mental health professionals, children's advocacy centers, and other community-based nonprofit organizations. And whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in safe nurturing environments, as well as supporting local professionals dedicated to meeting the needs of child abuse victims. Now therefore, I T.J. Gilmore, Mayor of the city of Louisville, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to work together to reduce child abuse and neglect, and to significantly improve the response of our community when child abuse occurs in the months and years ahead. And we have Ms. Suzanne Woodard from Children's Advocacy Center to have us a few words.
Yeah, thank you very much. Well, first, I just want to say that we at the Advocacy Center are extremely grateful for the partnership we have with Louisville. You guys have been amazing to us in your support through advocacy, through sharing some of the financial burden to take care of these kiddos. I think you said 354, 354 kids. Now, if you think about it, that's a lot, but on the flip side, you have to remember that one in 10 kids are abused before the age of 18, and only one in 10 of those will tell. So if you take the number 354, there's actually more, like about 3,500 that are actually being abused. And so our goal is not to end the abuse, we know that evil is out there, but to make sure we get our hands on as many of those kiddos as possible and really try to break that cycle and get them on a path to healing. So just want to say thank you to Louisville for everything you've done. You guys have been a great partner for us, the police chief here, all of our partners in the multidisciplinary team. It takes a village to do this, and we certainly are grateful for all of you.
Thank you so much. All right. I'm going to have a Parks Van up here for this one. Let's go on. Good to see you. All right, and this one, since 2016, we've been doing this. So please don't send me an email saying, "We really need to get signed up on this." We've been doing it, we've been doing it. Every year, I get a bunch, pile of emails. I'm like, I even wrote the monarch folks, I said, "Hey, can you?" And they said, "We're going to try." So here we go. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, and both the Western and Eastern monarch populations have seen significant declines with less than 1% of the Western monarch population remaining, while the Eastern population has fallen by as much as 90%. And whereas the city of Louisville recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems and that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife. And whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and the city of Louisville is striving to become a leader. And on January 9th, 2023, I T.J. Gilmore signed the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge and have officially committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly. We do it every year, guys. Whereas the city of Louisville has committed to engage with gardening leaders and partners to support monarch butterfly conservation and to work with city parks and recreation, public works, sustainability, and other relevant staff to identify opportunities to revise and maintain mowing programs and milkweed native nectar plant planting programs. And whereas every resident of the city of Louisville can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. And the city of Louisville has adopted the Louisville 2025 Plan, which sets a clear shared vision for the kind of community Louisville wants to be when it turns 100 years old, and includes big moves for extending the green and sustainability that each contain action steps focused on preserving green spaces and connecting people with nature. Now therefore, I T.J. Gilmore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Louisville, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2023, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the city of Louisville, and encourage all residents to participate in community activities that support and celebrate monarch conservation. I think there'll be a little bit of that at Colorpalooza. So, did you have anything to say?
Nope.
Then you're going to take this? And folks, really, this is, while it's the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, it really comes down to citizens and our staff and the amazing amount of implementation that they have done over the last, well, since 2016, to really drive this type of program. And you can see the changes in our streets, our thoroughfares, our public spaces, it's really exciting. So thank you guys so much for the hard work. Public hearing item one, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from single-family residential R 7.5 district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use II district zoning on approximately 0.15 acres out of the J.W. King Survey Abstract 696 located at 131 Milton Street as requested by Rita Williams, the property owner, case number 23024Z. 131 Milton Street is located on the northwest corner of Elm Street and Milton Street and contains a single-family home. The property owner is requesting to rezone the property from single-family residential district to Old Town Mixed Use II to allow future development potential. The proposed zoning complies with the Louisville 2025 Vision Plan, big move of Old Town and the Old Town Master Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 5 to 0 on March 21st, 2023. It is recommended that the city council approves the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, available for questions, and if there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Council, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is set forth in the caption.
Second.
City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 0.15 acres of the J.W. King Survey Abstract 696 located at 131 Milton Street from single-family residential district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use II district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Public hearing number two, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for automobile sales and leasing with two associated alternative standards relating to building materials and awnings on approximately 2.295 acres legally described as Lot 4, Block A, Vista Ridge Point Edition, Zone Light Industrial District located at the southwest corner of Storage Court and South Simmons Freeway as requested by Chris Clark, NCA Partners, on behalf of APD Capital LLC, the property owner, case number 23-01-1-SUP. AutoPark Dallas proposes to construct an automobile sales and leasing establishment in the IH 35E corridor overlay district. Along with the special use permit, the applicant is requesting the following two alternative standards to reduce the brick or stone requirements from 80% to 0%, and use large format porcelain tile, and B, to allow a recessed main entry in lieu of the required awning or canopy across the primary entrance. Planning and zoning commission recommended unanimous approval 5 to 0 of the special use permit, and the overlay district board recommended unanimous approval 5 to 0 of the alternative standards on March 21st, 2023. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance and the two associated alternative standards as set forth in the caption above with the condition that a trail easement be dedicated by separate instrument in the same location as the existing private drainage easement located at the southwest corner of the site to accommodate a potential future trail alignment. Richard Ludke, our planning director, is available for questions. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Council, entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the ordinance and the two associated alternate standards as set forth in the caption above with the condition that a trail easement be dedicated by separate instrument in the same location as the existing private drainage easement located at the southwest corner of the site to accommodate a potential future trail alignment as set forth in the caption. Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for automobile sales and leasing on approximately 2.295 acres legally described as Lot 4A, Block A, Vista Ridge Point Edition located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Storage Court and South Simmons Freeway and Zone Light Industrial District providing for repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Public hearing number three, consideration of amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2021 Annual Action Plan, changing the scope for the Triangle Park Development Project. The 2021-2022 CDBG Annual Action Plan included a project to acquire additional land for the Triangle Park Development. The project was funded $250,000. The United States Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that the property be purchased for no less than the full appraised value. City staff hired an appraiser, but the appraisal came in at $469,329, which is more than the CDBG allocation. To complete the land purchase, the city used local funds that otherwise would have been used to purchase park equipment for Glory Parque La Gloria. This amendment will allow CDBG funds to now pay for the originally planned park equipment. It's recommended that the city council approve the 2021 Annual Action Plan amendments as set forth in the caption above. We have Ashley Farron, Neighborhood Services Manager, available for questions. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Move to close the public hearing.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. That's to close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
There's nothing to approve.
Oh, that's right, there is nothing to approve. Even though it says there is. Then we'll kill that one. That's all done. Thank you, Ashley. Item E, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have two requests to appear, and my apologies, I'm gonna mess up this last name, but I have a Sabra Perdizzi. Close? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sabra Perdizzi. Does my time begin now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, as you know, in 2020, the COVID pandemic hit this city, county, state, and everybody was in a national emergency and on lockdown. Before the lockdown, I watched my uncle suffocate to death in the ICU in Houston at St. Luke's Hospital. The 21-year lung transplant surgeon had no idea that my uncle died because of COVID, all because my other uncle died in Panama City Beach, Florida, and they went down there for the funeral. So after the lockdown kind of let up, I found a way to be able to kind of make sense out of what happened to my uncle. He was a retired superintendent of the school district. And so I signed up for the Denton County Medical Reserve Corps to make sense of my uncle dying. And I began volunteering April 2020. That summer, I also was an ambassador for the Red Cross. So I was working all the hurricanes too, while I was working, volunteering for the Denton County Medical Reserve Corps. So on January 20th, 2021, one of the members of the fire department approached somebody with the county. The county was in charge of the county emergency and the state emergency. Somebody from your city decided that they were not gonna play nice in this sandbox and that they were in charge. So the person that approached this person with the county was your fire chief, Martin McNamara, and he did it on city time. I spoke with a county commissioner last week, and she said his behavior was appalling and disgusting. He is not in charge of the county. Judge Andy Eads is in charge of the county. This should not have happened. So he impaired a county emergency, a state emergency, because he thought he was in charge. I've been volunteering since I was five. I saved my first life at age four. I was a combat medic in the military, and I've also taken the National Registry EMT because my grades were so high. I have a background in nursing and also have a legal background, too. I helped capture a prison escapee at the age of seventeen, and it took me 10 minutes to find out who this person really was. So for one of your city department officials to approach somebody with the county should never happen, and something needs to be done because his behavior is appalling and disgusting according to the council, the county commissioner that I spoke with last week. And it will, it will come back to the city. So something needs to be done because he shouldn't be showing up to emergencies and being arrogant. It should never happen. And I'm guessing he was probably with your former mayor and councilman Rudy Durham when Rudy Durham sexually harassed me in a restaurant after city hours in Highland Village. That occurred while I was going through divorce. And at the time, I'd also met Chief Dever when he was assistant chief in Dallas. And he handed me his card because he knew I was going through a rough divorce. And I don't know, something needs to be done because this is just reckless behavior and a very poor representation of your city. And I also work state emergencies, national emergencies, I'm a regional, I'm on the regional disaster team, so he may run into me again.
Thank you, that's your time. I have a Peyton Jackson. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Peyton Jackson. Are you aware that the only way to grow is to be uncomfortable? So let's get uncomfortable. What is your biggest monthly expense? Housing is usually the answer. But one way to curb that and afford the ignorance of increasing rental prices is through homeownership. But thanks to Roosevelt and the Homeowners Loan Act, my people were stripped of yet another American dream. My child will be the first generation in my family to inherit a property, all because a white man had access to red crayons and maps instead of his coloring book. By way of redlining, financially speaking, we could afford the properties, but we were legally blocked by the local and federal government. Ninety-eight percent out of 100, 98% of home loans went to white people, all because you never expected to be my neighbor, unless I was in the outhouse. Because when I move in now, values decline. But when you come back, it's gentrified, and now we can't afford rents and neighborhoods that we grew up in. But I'm guessing, just like how y'all tried to force us back to Africa, it's just another one of your COVID sins.
Ma'am, Lewisville's one of the most diverse cities in North Texas, so I would appreciate it if you would keep your comments general as opposed to you.
They are general, they are general.
I don't.
I'm not, I'm not attacking you, sir. I'm speaking on the history, and I would appreciate if you do not interrupt me, mayor. All because you never expected to be my neighbor. Black America lost trillions of dollars in equity and opportunity costs, all because after kidnapping us, enslaving us, raping us, breeding us, selling us, trading us, black codes, sharecropping, convict leasing, pinage, oppression, Jim Crow, and even police brutality to this day, you never expected to be my neighbor. All reparations say aye, aye. The ayes have it. The next time a citizen is talking, hold your tongue.
All right, we don't have any further Citizens Forum?
Can I step down as a citizen real quick?
No, I think we got that one, Ronnie. I think we're fine. All right, item F, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For citizens to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or a comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I do believe we have a request to remove items eight and 11.
That's correct.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exceptions of items eight and 11.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of items eight and 11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll recuse myself as we vote on items eight and 11.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones? All right. Item eight. Approval and Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement between the city of Lewisville and Half Associates Incorporated to Perform Professional Services Related to the Lewisville DCTA Trail Connection Segment A, in the amount of $68,300 for a total agreement amount of $435,700 and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. The city council approved the original professional services agreement for design of the southern extension of the DCTA trail with Half Associates in July 2022. The proposed amendment will accommodate additional time and effort required with obtaining easements from the Dallas Area Rapid Transit, as well as design of an additional .26 mile of trail to accommodate the city of Carrollton trail alignment with the future TC Rice Nature Park. It's recommended that the city council approve the amendment and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement as set forth in the caption. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amendment and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes four to nothing. Item 11. Approval of Resolution of the Lewisville City Council Approving an Advanced Funding Agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation Regarding the Award of Grant Funding Through the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Improvement Program for Construction of the Lewisville Bicycle and Pedestrian Share Use Path from the Denton County Transit Authority, Hebron Station South, to the Lewisville Carrollton city limits, and authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute the AFA and all other documents related to project, and take other action necessary for the city to receive funding under the AFA and provide an effective date. In 2021, the city of Lewisville was awarded a grant of $2.4 million through Tech Dot's Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Improvement Program to construct the final segment of the DCTAA train rail trail south of the Hebron Station to the city limits of Carrollton. Transportation Development Credits in the amount of $480,000 will be used in lieu of the local participation requirement of 20%, a local contribution of $24,000 to accommodate Tech Dot's administration of the grant will be due 30 days after the AFA is executed. Staff is currently working with Half Associates on the design of the trail. It's recommended that the city council approve the resolution as listed in the caption above. Council, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the resolution as captioned above.
Second.
Council, if you'd please vote. I think that means we've got to do a voice vote. So council, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Well, four to nothing. All right, if we could have Councilmember Jones back? Great. Item G, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Meredith, you mind if I start with you?
Sure. Got a couple library activities for the week. Book for Murder for Adults, Tuesday, April 18th, 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. No registration required at the small conference room. Storytime at Dragon Park for families with children of all ages, Friday, April 21st, 9:00 to 9:30. No registration is required at Dragon Park, 2719 Moreland Drive. Check social media for updates on weather. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, mayor. I have a number of things for the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances, the North Texas Emeralds Spring Show presented by the University of North Texas will be on April 30th. Black Box Songwriter Series featuring Lisa Morales, presented by the city of Lewisville on April 30th. Clyburn and the Community, and I'm sorry, Jiwan Yang, presented by Clyburn and the city of Lewisville on May 2nd. A Night of Stand-Up, presented by the city of Lewisville, May 5th. There will be two shows that night. And as always, acoustic jam sessions on Fridays from 6:00 to 9:00, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. Activities, the big one this weekend is Color Palooza, the Color Palooza Festival, presented by the city of Lewisville, and I'm going to put in a plug for the, also that April 22nd is also Earth Day, and in conjunction with that, the Lewisville Morning Rotary is going to have a booth at the, at the Color Palooza, and we will be collecting batteries, lithium ion and NiCad batteries for recycling. So bring your batteries to our booth. Poetry Collage Workshop, Poetry Meets Art, presented by the city of Lewisville, April 29th, and a garden secrets class, Gardening for Birds and Butterflies, presented by Keep Lewisville Beautiful on May 4th. And there are two exhibitions going on. First of all, Art and Life Exhibition by Lewisville poet Laureate Yun San Nam, presented by the city of Lewisville. That's going from April 15th through May 13th. And the Lewisville ISD Art Show Elementary West, presented by Lewisville Independent School District, April 12th through May 2nd. And that is all I have, mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Secretary?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Running out of time with you, aren't we? Breaking my heart. Congratulations. You can always come back, though. Public seating, it's awesome. Perfect. Mr. Ludke?
No report, mayor.
No report, mayor.
No report.
Mayor, councilmembers, park fans, just want to give a shout out to the team at Community Relations and Tourism in the Parks Department. Last Thursday at the DFW Directors Association, we received an award for arts and entertainment for our Painted Crosswalks program, that the most recent one has gone in at Thrive, so gaining some recognition on spreading the artistic love to the residents of Lewisville. So congratulations to the team.
Good evening, lake fans. The lake level's at 522.1, which is just above the normal pool, so keep up the good work on the conservation.
Yeah, they're putting a lot of water downstream. I was down there this weekend, and it's, the dam is flowing. Jim?
Chief? Mayor, I wanted to introduce Chief Worrell. He's in the back of the room. Squadra mentioned him. He is our PD Project Manager for the Public Safety Center, and he's doing an outstanding job.
Thank you, Chief Worrell.
I did just want to mention that with regard to the public art, the Painted Crosswalk program, the, so the school district is having an art show over at the Grand Theater that you should go see because my son has a piece in it. So I went over there this weekend, and I did get me one of those handy-dandy little bookmarks that I'm using for my book club, and they're going really fast. So if you want to get a bookmark, get over there and get one and look at the art. I wanted to, I get asked a lot from people how they can get more involved in the city, and so I wanted to mention that applications are open for our boards and commissions right now. Deadline is quickly approaching, I believe, I lost it on here, I believe it's May 5th, somewhere around in there, because we're gonna, we're gonna do our board, our appointments in June. So you can find the application for the boards and commission on the city websites and the Boards and Commissions page. And I also just wanted to do just a quick little shout out. And I also just wanted to do just a quick little shout out for the adoption special we're running. I love what Animal Services is doing with our themes. So, it is a spring a pet adoption event through the end of the month, so go get you a buddy. That's all I have.
Councilmember Jones?
All right. Well, I just got a response from Patrick. He's down in Austin right now testifying for us. So, I do something for Castle Hills since he's not here, since that's what he normally does. On April 23rd, there will be a classic car and truck show from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 2520 King Arthur Boulevard. Go check it out. Also, since we're talking about, you know, being involved, early voting starts on April 24th, so get out there and go vote. You can vote at the Annex, Thrive, or you can go up to Denton if you want to just drive up there and waste some gas, but please get out there and vote. It's important, local elections are probably the most important election because they deal with you directly every day. So, get out there and vote, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Well, since two of my items were taken.
I've done my job.
I won't report on those. I just want to say thank you to our city employees and our department heads, and each and every one of you, I am proud to have you where you are. Y'all are all beings of the highest integrity that I've worked with, and I will continue to carry you through in prayer every day. We are very lucky to have each and every one of you.
Nothing? All right. Only thing I have is 6:00 p.m. this Wednesday at Thrive. I will be having our latest Meet the Mayor and... I, you know, hablo. Oh, we're going to be at Herring. Okay, thank you very much then, at Herring Center. So, at the new, come check out the new Herring Center, my apologies, but it'll be at 6:00 o'clock, Meet the Mayor. We're going to be talking about what's been going on over the last three months or so with the city, and you can probably drive by and see what's happening with the beginnings of demolition of the police department as we continue to move dirt over there. So, look forward to seeing folks there. With that, we do have, we have no further workshop, but we do have closed session. So, in accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, Section 551.072 Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087 Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, and Section 551.074 Personnel, City Manager Claire Powell, City Secretary Julie Worcester, and City Attorney Elizabeth Plaster, we will now move into closed session. All right, we're going to call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council back to order. Counsel, is there any action to be taken?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution providing the following increases in total annual compensation to the following persons beginning in April 12th, 2023. City Manager Claire Powell, total increase amount $19,260. City Secretary Julie Worcester, $20,0981. City Attorney Liz Plaster, total increase amount of $4,131. I further move to amend the city manager's contract so that beginning April 12th, 2023, $19,260 of her total annual compensation shall be contributed to the City of Lewisville Supplemental Retirement 401A Plan each year, and authorize the mayor to execute said amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, all those, oh, do we have a vote, or do we need to vote verbal? Yeah. Counsel, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. As there is no further action to be taken this evening, this meeting of the Lewisville City Council stands adjourned.